Okay, calling this meeting to into session. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings NJ SA 10-4-6, statute adequate notification of this meeting has been provided by advertising in the Courier-News and posting notice in the Board of Education Administration Building and District Schools and filing notice with the Borough Clerk. I hereby call to order the regular public meeting Tuesday, May 20, 2025, in the Lincoln Middle School Cafeteria, 400 Denellen Avenue at 7:03 PM. This meeting is broadcast live. For details, check www.denellenschools.org. Moving on to item number two on our agenda, and if you need copies, I believe they're on the table over there, roll call. So, Mr. Pepe, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Is present.
Mrs. Condit?
Present.
Ms. Ibak?
Present.
Dr. Gendrono?
Present.
Mrs. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Solano?
Present.
Ms. Shimpf, is that here? Mrs. Shep?
Present.
And Mr. Walker?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, wonderful. Moving on to item number three on the agenda. The Denellen Board of Education will now adjourn into executive session to discuss items that fall within specific exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act, see NJ SA 10-4-12B. The confidential matters discussed by the Board during this executive session include items related to individual privacy, collective bargaining agreements, pending or anticipated litigation, and personnel. Any discussion that does not need to remain confidential will be made public as soon as it is practical. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. All individuals who may be discussed in executive session have been adequately notified. Action will take place after the conclusion of the executive session. May I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Move to go to exec.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will see you in about 25 minutes.
Move to return to public?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Now we move on to item number four, the pledge of allegiance. So the flag is here. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you all please remain standing for a moment of reflection and respect for our troops serving throughout the world, our troops who have served, and our troops who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of our United States of America? Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce our retirees. As we get up there in years, there's a little bit of jealousy that we get to acknowledge our retirees and as we get closer to that day. I will start with Mrs. Laura Murray because I know her bedtime is coming up soon. So Laura, if you could come on up. Laura actually retired back in December and it was a huge loss for Dunellen High School and the district. Even though she's still around, she lives in town and still does a lot for the community, it was a loss for us. And one of the happier moments of the school year for me was we had Ms. Piano and Mr. Sutera gave a school-wide concert, one of those last days before winter break. And as the concert finished, we called Mrs. Murray up to the front of the school in front of all of the students and they got to give her a standing ovation for her retirement. So it was a really nice moment. I know she doesn't like the attention, the last thing that she wants, but it was a really nice moment and we really owe a lot to her. The students owed a lot to her and a lot of them came up to talk to her. She was a paraprofessional for a lot of years at all three buildings and did so much for the students. And it was really nice when a lot of those students came back and acknowledged the help and support that she gave them over the years. So she still works with the booster clubs. If you haven't ordered your lawn signs, make sure you do for your graduates from all three buildings because she's still working on that. But she is a pillar of the community, loves to travel, has the weddings for her children, and is still participating in pickleball in town. So our retiree--
Very good.
Not as good as one of our other retirees, I hear, but very, very good as well.
But guess what? Guess what we're gonna be doing all summer?
Be partners, yeah. So congratulations, Laura Murray.
Thank you.
All right, our next retiree this year is Mr. Danny Hummel. Danny is a proud graduate of Dunellen High School, class of 1988. When he graduated, he won one of those senior superlatives and Dan U. One?
Most likely to succeed.
And that is evident because he spent his career here teaching in Dunellen. He's had a great career. Anyone that knows him knows he gave his all as a physical education and health teacher. He's been our driver's ed teacher for many, many years. So all of the students in Dunellen that are driving, all of the good came from Dan. And if they get in any accidents, it's the behind-the-wheel people that they must have had the problems with. But he got to know the students as sixth graders and worked with them all through high school. And he really has done a phenomenal job. He is the organization part of the Health and Phys Ed Department. He does the locks for the lockers every year. When it's picture time, he got all of the picture forms organized for the students. He did all of those little things, helping out Ms. Del Rosario and the other teachers over the years that the rest of the department really is gonna have to pick those things up the next few years as he retires. As I said, Danny lives in town, so he's gonna be playing a lot of pickleball, jogging around town, exercising, staying fit. He has two daughters that he'll be able to, he'll be able to spend time with. One interesting part, and I mentioned this a bunch of years ago, when Danny won Teacher of the Year, I knew Danny before I knew Dan. And what I mean by that is years ago, he coached high school basketball here in Dunellen and I coached at another school. And I went back and looked at my old scorebooks a bunch of years ago and saw that we played against one another because the coaches' names were in the book and everything. And so it was very cool to see that, I don't remember the game, I do remember who won, but I don't remember the game. And I remember because it was still up in the old gym here back at the time. So he was a great competitor. He was a great coach here at the school. He did cross country, he did basketball, he did track. And he's done so much for the high school, the middle school, and the community, and he is going to be sorely missed. Danny Hummel. Thank you. And our final retiree for me this evening, Ms. Sandy Hoy. I came to Dunellen, I believe it was 16 years ago, and Ms. Hoy was over at the elementary school as the assistant principal. So we didn't have as many interactions. And then she came across town to the middle school and was the middle school principal for three years. And so we worked together a lot in that period of time. I know there's a lot of middle school people here and she worked with them. And she did a great job working with the middle school students. That was early when the middle school was just becoming the middle school again. After all that construction, all of this was renovated and added. So she did a nice job of kind of integrating back to what had been for Lincoln Middle School, that six-through-eight building, integrating it with what's going on for Dunellen High School. She then became Director of Curriculum and now Director of Accountability. So she's worn a lot of different hats over the years here in Dunellen. She's done a lot for the district and we're very appreciative of that and she is going to be missed. But I know she's gonna enjoy her time, especially with her grandchildren, because that's a huge part of her life now. So we wish her luck, Ms. Hoy.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Lynch. I'm gonna bring up Mr. Tennant now to speak about Ms. Kelly Vedder. Mr. Tennant.
Mr. Ross was gonna give me the night off, but I said to him, my dad always told me to honor those who are not here, especially those not in the room. So Kelly isn't forced to not with us tonight, but I wanted to read this about her. "Today we gather to honor someone who has not only shaped the artistic talents of our students, but also inspired us with their creativity, generosity, unshakable Irish spirit, our beloved teacher, Ms. Kelly Vedder. For years, Kelly has turned an art room into a sanctuary of imagination. She's been guiding hands through thousands of student creations, some bold, some beautiful, some uniquely interpretive. But no matter what came out of the students' brush or glue stick, Kelly saw potential. She saw stories. She made every child feel like an artist. One of the projects that stands out, not just because it was memorable, but because it's downright magical, was Kelly's annual wigwam design that she did for third graders. You haven't lived until you've seen an art room full of eight-year-olds trying to build dwellings with sticks, cardboard, and sheer determination. Under Kelly's leadership, it wasn't just an art lesson, it was a lesson in culture, cooperation, and patience. Lots of patience. She turned chaos into culture and taught our kids that structure and creativity can live side by side. As we celebrate Kelly's retirement, it's impossible not to reflect on her legacy she leaves behind, one that quite literally colors the walls of Faber School. Her breathtaking artwork fills our hallways from the vibrant mosaic heart hands that greet us every day with warmth to the inspiring Achieve Believe Night and Day mural that reminds us daily of our potential. Her honeycomb mural buzzes the community spirit and of course, her unforgettable Rosie the Riveter mural, who, if you look closely, quite bears a striking resemblance to our assistant principal that we know and love. Kelly's art hasn't just decorated our school, it was built with culture and creativity, inclusion and heart that will continue to inspire students and the staff for years to come. One of my favorite things about Ms. Vedder, beyond her incredible talent and dedication, is hearing about her stories of her punk rock concerts she went to in old-school New York City back in the 80s. Her eyes light up, she talks about seeing bands like Blondie, the Pixies, the Ramones, in gritty iconic venues that no longer exist but still live vividly in her memory. It's like stepping in a time machine when she shares those experiences, the energy, the edge, the culture, the rebellion of creativity that shaped her spirit. Those stories always reminded me that behind the creative force we see every day at Faber is someone who lived boldly, passionately, and deeply loved arts in all forms. And speaking of turning chaos into creativity, I'll never forget the Halloween when Kelly saved the day for quite possibly my street cred as a parent. I had promised my son a Star Wars-themed Halloween, but hadn't quite figured how to fit it into the picture. Enter Kelly, with her unmatched design and prowess. She not only designed the Millennium Falcon costume, she engineered it. Cardboard, paint, recycled materials, and a bit of magic transformed me into Han Solo's favorite ship. My son was thrilled and I was the talk of the neighborhood and once again, Kelly turned-- And once again, Kelly turned imagination into reality. But Kelly's talents extend beyond paintbrushes and paper mache. Over the past few years, she's been working on something many of us dream of, learning to speak Gaelic. That same curiosity and commitment she brings to her art, she brings to the language too. Her goal, to someday step foot on the Aran Islands and speak to the locals in native tongue. Well, no, she'll do it because if there's one thing Kelly has proven, it's that heart, humor, and a little bit of stubbornness, anything is possible. So, Kelly, as you move on from the halls of John P. Faber School to a wider world, we thank you for the laughter, for the lessons, for the art, and for reminding us all that creativity isn't a subject, it's a way of life. So, I leave you with an Irish blessing, Kelly, that my grandma would say as I left Ireland every summer headed back to the US. May the road rise to meet you, may the wind always be at your back, and may your journey ahead be as vibrant, meaningful, and full of wonder as the years of Faber you left for Faber School. Goodbye, and thank you so much, Ms. Vedder.
Thank you, Mr. Tennant. We have one other retiree this year, and this is Ms. Deborah Casabona. Debbie is the Accounts Payable Coordinator in the district. She works in the central office. Debbie came to Dunellen in 2020 with over 30 years of experience in office management and leadership, including six years working at a charter school business office. When she arrived, she became a key member of the business office team, serving initially as bookkeeper and then becoming Accounts Payable Coordinator. She has worked diligently to protect taxpayer dollars by ensuring that vendor payments are processed when the proper procedures have been followed and invoices have been received and verified. Now Debbie has decided to turn her attention toward her family, and she's looking forward to spending more time with her beloved grandson. Very happy for her, and we wish her a happy retirement. She will be missed in the Dunellen Business Office. And I will say that those of you who know Deb just know her, she's an incredible sweetheart. And it's funny, I worked in the district for about a year and a half, and she came in one day just beaming from ear to ear because she had gotten a new car. And it was like the most excited anyone has ever gotten for, you know, for something like that. It just brought incredible light to the office, and she always did that. We're very, very happy for her. We wish her the best as she moves into the next stage of her career. And let's give it up for Debbie Casabona. All right, we're going to take about a 10-minute pause now just to spend some time with our retirees, recognize them, and honor them. So, please, you know, get up, mingle, shake some hands, and we'll be back in a couple minutes.
So as you were interested, there's two revisions to the agenda. The first was Operations Agenda Items S and T were added from the old, from the original one that was put onto the website originally. So those are in bold if you have the updated one. Those are added today. There's also an updated staff list, which is on the side table as well. And Noel, I think we're up with you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on to, so we're back in, moving on to item number seven, President's remarks. Just a few words as we get back in here. So first of all, I wanted to give a big heartfelt thank you to our retirees, Debbie Casabona, Sandy Hoy, Daniel Hummel, Laura Murray, and Kelly Vetter for all of the time, energy, and tremendous work that has helped to move our Dunellen School District forward. The impact you have had here in Dunellen has been felt by all of us. Mayor Retirement be full of all the things you love, family, friends, and plenty of time to enjoy it all. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and all the best wishes on the next chapter. I did want to take a moment to recognize, I mentioned this last time, but to give a more detailed number, at the last board meeting, I mentioned how successful our PTO's Tricky Tray was. And so, and I promised last time I would give what that final number was. I was able to get that, and the final number, ready? Twenty-four thousand, thirty dollars and fifty-eight cents. So way to go, PTO. That helps our kids, and I would like to extend, you know, a thanks to the PTO and especially to Ms. Moore, thank you so much for driving that. And I understand that you're not continuing on as president next year, but I wanted to also say thank you for the time that you've spent building the board and making it really, you know, active and vibrant and, you know, it's in a great place to carry things forward. So thank you so much, you did awesome job. Thank you. And we'll see you in the community, we'll say, we're doing other things. So as I usually note, staying healthy, as the weather changes again and again and again, and the temperatures jump like a yo-yo, it is important to reiterate and underscore that healthy kids mean healthy schools, which means a healthy community. So bottom line, we encourage you to take the common sense precautions to minimize the spread of infectious diseases that can really impact our schools. And we're about a month away, so let's keep our kids healthy, in the school that is, and let's keep our kids healthy and enjoy all of the great memorable moments coming our way as the school year goes into the ninth inning. So as I do have done for some time now, I like to call out the monthly celebrations. And now these are not all of them that exist, but ones that I specifically wanted to call out. So in May, this is, May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. It's also Jewish American Heritage Month. It's also Mental Health Awareness Month, as well as the National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, which was on May 7th. And that's to highlight the significance of children's mental health and promote positive mental well-being for young people. There's also International Day Against Homophobia, Transphobia, and Biphobia Day, which was on 17th of May. And on this day, you know, we reflect upon the violence and discrimination lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex folks worldwide suffer and recommend ourselves to opposing these acts. And this year, like every year, we state unequivocally, LGBTQI persons deserve recognition of the universal human rights and human dignity, as we all do. May 26th is Memorial Day, and that commemorates all of our men and women who have died in military service for the United States. And I mention all of these things, and these events, and these celebrations, to underscore how important diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging are to our lives and the world around us. With diversity, we're able to welcome and appreciate different views and perspectives, and how that makes our lives richer and stronger. With equity, that's important, so we're all playing on the same field by the same rules. Inclusion is key, so there is equal access to opportunities and resources for everyone. And with belonging, you feel you are part of something, a group or community, where you are accepted, where you are valued, and where you are comfortable. You fit in and are an important part of the whole. These things have an unbelievable impact on our community. Open, honest, and genuine communication that is respectful, positive, supportive, fair, and most of all, kind, goes a long way in strengthening our community. So it's the time of the year when everything is happening all at once as the school year winds down. Like as I mentioned, we are about four weeks away from wrapping up another great year, culminating in the eighth grade promotion ceremony and DHS graduation. Events have already happened, like the Dunellis and the Faber Band and Choir Concerts, and there are many, many other events that are coming up in the not-too-distant future. And Mr. Ross, I'm sure we'll touch on some of these. They're also on the agenda, and they're also on dunellen schools dot org, which is our website, and you can pull it down actually and add it to your calendar from there if you'd like. But please, I mentioned this, to please take a moment to appreciate all the little moments from this year that added up to something truly significant, and help us celebrate all of our students and their accomplishments and hard work as they make their push into the home stretch of the year. Well done, students. And thank you, everyone, for your time and listening. So moving on to Superintendent's Report, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Dr. Gendrano. So first, of course, I want to thank the retirees for their incredible work in the district, and the tributes from Mr. Lynch and Mr. Tennant were fantastic, so thank you. Ms. Hoy, I want to say a special thank you to you. You've really been an incredible team player over the last couple of years. Your contributions really have been tremendous, and I thank you for the work that you've done, and also for the support and friendship and care that you've taken for your colleagues, for staff members, and for me as the new superintendent, so thank you. I also want to congratulate our friend Ryan Ferrer. Ryan, stand up so everyone can say hi to you. Ryan, Ryan is a proud Rutgers graduate as of last Thursday, so yes, we're very, very proud of Ryan. So congrats to Ryan, and it was great to see him on Thursday, right after graduation, be able to congratulate him and his family. So I also want to thank Ms. Nicole Moore for her incredible time and contributions on the PTO as a president and co-president. Ms. Moore is stepping aside, and the new co-presidents are going to be Maria Kowalik and Rebecca Gendrano. But Ms. Moore, obviously, your contributions to the district have been, you know, uncountable in so many ways. And seeing you at every board meeting, I think, almost since I became superintendent has just been remarkable. You're often here with the Sella as the only two, but it's great to have you here. It's amazing to have you in the community, so thank you. I love, yeah. All right, so we have, over the last couple of weeks, we did have a board meeting two weeks ago. Last week was Special Education Week. The theme of that was planting the seed of education. I do want to shout out Dr. Santinello, all of our amazing power professionals, our teachers, our child study team members, related services folks. We have really been working on inclusive education, and all of these folks have really done a great job building our program, supporting our students, supporting really innovative programming throughout the district, so congratulations to all of them. We also are the proud recipients of the Silver Level Award at Faber through Keep Middle Sex Moving. So the 2025 New Jersey Safe Roots to School Recognition Program had its annual meeting last week, and I was able to attend on behalf of Faber School. The recognition is developed by the Department of Transportation and the New Jersey Safe Roots Resource Center, and administered through Keep Middle Sex Moving, who's a very close partner of ours. I want to give special thanks to Mr. Tennant for his leadership, and also some folks in the community, Diana Starice, who is just, she seems like she's everywhere, she's just an amazing friend to the district. Council members, Chrisol Iris Lance and Cole Sigman, and the entire Mayor's Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Task Force, and everyone else who's involved in Walk to School Wednesday, and the walking school bus, and the Safe Roots work, and all of that. It's really making the town a much better place for students. Keep Middle Sex Moving is working with us on a bike rodeo community fair, which is going to be on Thursday, June 12th, at Faber. So we're going to be working on that. PTO is going to be involved, there's some community groups involved, we'll have some food service providers there, some community health organizations there as well. So more information will be shared about that as the date gets closer. We have a really cool video called Multilingualism is My Superpower. This was a video that was put together by Megan Dropkin, who's our Director of Curriculum, Paula Ortiz, Damaris Rios, and Ryan for his editing. In order to inspire students to participate in the seal of biliteracy, we had nineteen of our staff members, certainly not all of our bilingual staff members, but nineteen of our staff members participated. They did a little clip on the video talking about the power of multilingualism, how important it is and what the benefits of our speaking multiple languages can be. We had folks speaking in Spanish, Marathi, Croatian, Norwegian, Portuguese, Albanian, Italian, and French. So thank you to all the staff members who participated, it's a beautiful, beautiful video. Dave, is that online now for folks to view? Or Ryan? It will be put on shortly on the district website. So check that out, it's about a 10-minute video, you can see, like I said, nineteen of our staff members celebrating multilingualism. The district was invited to present at the 2025 Teacher Climate and Culture Institute, which will be held July 29th at TCNJ. This is being run by the NJDOE, and we're going to be working with a team of teachers and administrators who will be involved in the grant work. There are over 600 attendees who are signed up to attend at this point, and we were invited as part of the work that we did with the grant that was awarded last year for $125,000. The Universal Preschool Grant, I wanted to just provide an update, I know there's been a lot of conversations about timelines for things, and I know a lot of folks are sort of curious about where we are with that. So the updated documents have all been submitted to the Department of Education, the scope of work, the cost estimate, schematic drawings, ed specs. You probably all know that we moved the location of the project, and the preliminary schedule, this is about, you know, where we hope to be. The submission just occurred, so that's mid-May. Design development is planned for mid-June. Construction documents will be completed by late August, and then the bidding and award is anticipated for September, for our September board meeting. That then means that we have about a month for permitting, and then the construction schedule gets figured out after that. So we'll probably start, you know, actual construction into the winter at best. So, you know, just to get a sense of kind of where the disruptions will be and all of that, that's about where we're looking. I want to thank the DEA and the senior class advisors for putting together the Senior Breakfast, beautiful pictures of that event, and then the Senior Trip to the Poconos took place on Friday, and everyone looked like they had a lot of fun despite some rain. There's some, yeah, a lot of fun. Everybody looked very cold because of the rain, but then they looked like they were, you know, shaking it off, so, but that looked like an amazing time. So yeah, thank you to everyone that was involved in that, and congrats to our seniors. Spring testing is wrapping up, we have NJSLA continuing just for the next couple of days of school. Our AP exams ended on Friday. We'll be doing some recruitment for open positions. We have the NJTSO recruitment efforts happening at the State Conference. That's Thursday, the conference actually started today, but we'll, our team will be there Thursday. We were involved yesterday in Clifton in a really cool opportunity called the Labor Management Collaborative. This is an organization that is sort of run through NJEA in partnership with Rutgers University, and I was there with a team of administrators, and also Monica Vokolchuk, Allison Egan, Ed Zukowski, and Laura Palmer from the district. And I had gone about two weeks earlier with Ms. Laguna-Maraud to Cherry Hill to check out their work as well. So this is a really great structure that the district is thinking about using, implementing, just to build more of a collaborative set of regular structured conversations at the buildings level and then at the district level. So very cool event, lots of really good feedback, lots of notes being taken yesterday, so. We have our MAEPD in-service coming up on Friday. We have our Starting with a Keynote, which is a keynote speaker is Alexander Shalom, who's a partner at Lowenstein-Sandler. He's the former Director of Supreme Court Advocacy at the ACLU NJ. He has argued, bless you, over 100 times before the Supreme Court of New Jersey, and he's the Chair of the Lowenstein Center for the Public Interest. He'll be talking about responding to the moment, understanding the law on supporting undocumented students. So this is obviously a topic that's very relevant to our community, and it's going to be given to all of our staff members, including secretaries, power professionals, everybody in the district. We then have time set aside for vertical articulations and then building-based staff meetings. In the afternoon, we have SEL activities planned, we have doggy yoga, we have sand art, birdhouses, kickball. We had tried to plan a blood drive, we had enough participants for a blood drive, and then the company actually We had enough participants for a blood drive, and then the company actually backed out. So, we'll plan that for probably in the fall. Calendar changes, just a reminder, there's no school for students on Friday, and then there's no school for anyone on Monday, obviously, for Memorial Day, but then also Tuesday and Wednesday due to the inclement weather, the lack of use of the inclement weather days. And then finally, our next meeting is June 10th. We will be honoring our Educators of the Year. Danellan High School is Tammy Del Rosario, Lincoln Middle School is Steph DiBiase, Faber Elementary School is Sherry Kraus, and Educational Specialist for the District Lisa Lebowitz. So, very excited for our Educators of the Year. We'll also be recognizing our student representatives, Douglas Gordato Cibrian and Josara McLaughlin. And this is also the last meeting of the school year, so we will be renewing our tenured staff and other positions like facilities members and non-tenure eligible folks. And with that, that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ross. So, moving on to item number nine, public comments on agenda items only. So, the Board invites public comment on agenda items only from members of our community in accordance with Board Policy 0167. Public comment sections are intended to provide an opportunity for members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The Board and administration will be taking notes during public comment, but will not provide substantive responses to questions or concerns raised by individual speakers. If necessary, superintendent may provide a brief response after the entire public comment period is completed. The Board appreciates and welcomes feedback from the community, but is not at liberty to engage in a back-and-forth dialogue with members of the public during this portion of the meeting. Prior to making your public comment, please state your name and municipality. Please note that all statements must be directed to the presiding officer, myself. Please come to the microphone at this time if you would like to make comments on agenda items only. Prior to beginning your comment, please state the agenda item you would like to comment
Danellan Board of Education Members.
Excuse me, sir, could you please state your name and municipality?
I was about to, yes. Mr. Superintendent, my name is John Ruskuski. I am a teacher here at Lincoln Middle School, and I reside here in Danellan.
Sorry, your address, sir? Oh, my spell is fine? Okay, sure, go ahead.
As some of you know, I'm a longtime, longtime resident of Danellan. As a student many years ago, I attended Faber School, Lincoln Middle School, and Danellan High School. My late wife and both of my daughters also went to school here. I have been a teacher here for twenty years, and my investment in the town and school, as you can see, runs quite deep. As a student, parent, and staff member, I have witnessed and worked for many administrators in this district. Bob Altmeier is undoubtedly, in my opinion, one of, if not the most qualified of them all. For over two decades, I worked as carpenter contractor before becoming an educator. I ran building crews for myself and for others. I understand how difficult the job of managing people is. Bob makes this look easy. He has a gift. He's fair. He knows when to bend and when to hold the line. As a member of his staff for thirteen years, I have never heard a negative word uttered in the halls, or the faculty room, or even around town towards him. He quickly earns the respect of every new teacher that joins our staff and retains high respect from all of the veterans. Bob has dedicated twenty-five years in this district and has proven to be more than a capable leader. All of us in this district should feel lucky that he has chosen to dedicate his career here. I hope this will influence your decision on the future placement of Mr. Altmeier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Could you please use the microphone?
Board members. Uh, Danellan, four hundred, Danellan Ave.
Say it again.
Four hundred, Danellan Ave, Danellan.
Yep, and your name and the item number on the agenda.
Yes, Tracy Valentine, item number thirteen.
Okay.
Okay. Can't reach here. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Tracy Valentine, and I've had the privilege of working alongside Mr. Altmeier, or Bob, for the past seven years as his secretary. I stand here today in solidarity with my fellow staff members and community in support of keeping Bob as Lincoln Middle School's principal, a position that he successfully established and maintained for the last nineteen years. As a close colleague, I can attest to his attributes to the school. He is the most supportive and passionate principal I've ever known. His values and character are superior. He is honest, loyal, trustworthy, fair, reliable, humble, and dedicated to his work. Throughout the years, I have witnessed Bob foster an environment where everyone is valued and supported. It would truly be a loss to the students, staff, and community after almost two decades of effective leadership. When I was hired, a countless number of people told me, "You are so lucky to be working for a great principal in school," and I could definitely attest to that sentiment. One of his many strengths is how he engages with the students. His passion is evident and is inspiring, to say the least. Year after year, students come back to visit and express how much they miss their years at Lincoln with him at the helm. I've seen students handwrite letters, some with tears in their eyes, expressing how much of an influence he has been in their lives, thanking him for his compassion, guidance, and advice. I've seen him go to bat for teachers and advocate for them. I've seen him meet with parents and students and manage any situation that comes at him so effortlessly and naturally. He is true to himself, transparent, and is one of the most genuine people I know. In closing, to place Bob in an administrative role that does not directly connect with the students and staff would be a disservice to us all, as this is his home away from home and where he thrives the most. It is apparent that the time he has served in Danellan has been positive and productive. Board members, I hope you make a well-informed decision and take the time to reconsider and realize the impact this decision will have. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Stephanie DiBiase.
Allison Tominski.
Doreen Denapoli.
And we're speaking on item thirteen.
Thank you.
We are the team, good evening, Danellan Board of Education Members. We are the team leaders here at Lincoln Middle School. Together, we have a combined total of over fifty years teaching in the district. We are here tonight to offer our support for Mr. Altmeier remaining as principal at Lincoln Middle School. Mr. Altmeier brings a strong sense of stability to LMS. Prior to his time at the middle school, there were five different principals in five years. His steady presence serves to provide reassurance and consistency, even in times of change. His dependability has been a key factor in building trust and maintaining building momentum over the years. Mr. Altmeier is a strong leader, a clear communicator, approachable, and sets high expectations for all. He is decisive in his decisions, yet adaptable and flexible when needed. He makes his teachers feel supported and valued. Additionally, Mr. Altmeier has the unique ability to connect with all of the students. He is always there to offer them words of motivation and encouragement. However, he is not afraid to have the hard conversations with them about their behavior or lack of performance in the classrooms. He shows them he genuinely cares about them, their lives, and their future success. In closing, Mr. Altmeier has proven his loyalty and dedication over the years to the students, staff, and community of Danellan. He makes Lincoln Middle School a terrific place to both work and learn, and we hope that you will decide to keep him in his current position. Thank you for your time and consideration.
My name is Rocky Modi, and I'm speaking on item number thirteen. I teach seventh grade math here at LMS, and I've been teaching in the district for over eighteen years. I'm speaking tonight to express my strong support for Mr. Altmeier as a principal. Having known him for over eighteen years, including his thirteen years leading LMS, I deeply value the positive impact of his leadership. His open-door policy fosters a welcoming and supportive environment where both students and staff feel heard and valued, enabling him to build strong relationships throughout our school. His consistent presence has been crucial in providing stability and strengthening our school's climate and culture. As a teacher, I find Mr. Altmeier's feedback and guidance extremely constructive and motivating. I wholeheartedly believe his continued leadership is vital for the success at LMS. Thank you for your time and cooperation.
I'm a social studies teacher here at Lincoln Middle School. I've known Bob for quite some time. I knew him when I was in Danellan prior as an administrator myself. And I know that having been an administrator for sixteen years and also a board member for seven years, how difficult the job can be, to be pushed and pulled in a lot of different directions, have a lot of different stakeholders telling you a lot of different things. Bob does that very well, and what I've noticed most about Bob in my time with him is he has a gift. You know, you can go to school and learn a lot of things about how to be a leader and be an administrator, but sometimes you're just born with a gift, a gift where you can speak to people, people can speak to you, you can understand and empathize with them, and Bob has that, and it's a rare commodity. And kids see it, we as a staff see it, and I really would encourage you to think hard about where a man like that would best be placed. I think he's in the best place for the district and for the kids in the district, right where he is. So, thank you.
John Osborne, 432 First Street. Like to address two agenda items. The first is, I believe, eight E, the football coach position, and I just want to congratulate the Board and hope that the Board approves this selection. Mr. McGowan is an excellent coach, and he would be a terrific person to come in in Coach Denapoli's place. So, congratulations on an excellent, on an excellent choice. The other one is on the staff approval list, line one, and that is Mr. Altmeier, who's been the subject of discussion. We've heard a number of people from the staff declare Mr. Altmeier is a terrific building administrator from the perspective of teachers, and I'm going to speak with respect to his value as a building administrator in the school system from the public's perspective. Mr. Altmeier is an outstanding building administrator at a time when developing building administrators, which are a primary and extremely important part of the administration in any district, is a difficult thing. We have a man who has extensive experience and someone who is of great value to both the community and most particularly the students. It would be a disservice to the community and to the district to put him into a position where he does not have direct contact with students the way he does right now. So, I would urge the Board very strongly to support the position of many in this community in maintaining Mr. Altmeier as a building administrator, and particularly in Lincoln Middle School. Thank you.
747 Walnut Street, Roger Dalton.
Hello, fantastic staff.
My son is Preston Dalton. You know, when I heard about all this, I just felt I had to come and, you know, and voice my opinion. You know, it's not, you know, it's a very small town, you know, the transition from being at, over at Faber to come in here for a lot of kids, you know, they feel like, ah, it's a little nervous, I'm a little nervous. Preston was one of those kids. And when we did the back-to-school night, and even before that, the intro to sixth grade, Principal Altmeier really made us very welcome and very excited about coming over to Lincoln Middle. And the enthusiasm that he spoke about every faculty member that was here that day and about the ones that weren't made us, we knew that this was going to be a great year for him. He is a three marking periods in a row, high honor roll student, and we owe that to the fantastic staff, but what Principal Altmeier brings to this town is his enthusiasm and his true love for education and developing young minds. So, you know, frankly, whatever has to happen, I hope he stays on. He's a fantastic guy. I heard about his name before I even came to this school, and listened to what everyone says, I just second all their opinions, so, I hope this is something that can be rectified. Thank you so much.
Las Valencias, residing in Danellan. So, I'm probably the guy that knows the least about this. I have a sixth grade, I actually have two sixth grade daughters. Their transition to the middle school was fantastic, so I can't say enough about the teachers. And the fact that they're saying all this stuff about Mr. Altmeier has to have a lot of credibility, because I truly believe in the teachers. My interactions with Mr. Altmeier have been limited. I'm picking up and dropping off kids, but I see the way he interacts with kids. I see the firmness, the gentleness. He looks like a principal to me. So, I literally found out about this this afternoon at three o'clock through the grapevine. I heard, oh, he might not be coming back, and I was shocked. He looks like a principal to me, he acts like a principal to me. Again, I don't know if there's an incident where he deviated from policy, or was, if that's the case, you know, was he, you know, asked to remediate something, was that done? Again, I don't know these facts, but I would ask you to look into that, so, what that deviation is, if there is. But again, from what I saw, you know, he was, he always looked like a principal, and like I said, I don't know what the politics are behind this, what the situation is or what happened, but I would ask you to really look at the facts and make a good decision, because, like I said, as a parent, I was shocked.
My name's Stephen Knight. I live at 44 Third Street in Danellan. I've known Mr. Altmeier for ten, eleven years now. Before my stepson transitioned from Faber into the middle school, Mr. Altmeier used to come up to my facility where I worked, and we used to interact, and he was just a pleasant gentleman. And then I found out he was the middle school principal, and I made a joke to him, and I told him, I said, "Wait until you meet Eddie Kimok," my stepson. He's given a lot of people, you know, a hard time over the years, but Mr. Altmeier, he laughed. He said, "You know what? I can't wait to meet Eddie." And throughout the time that Eddie was in the middle school, he never gave up on him. He always supported Eddie, even though Eddie had some issues, and he always called me and gave me updates. He told me, "Hey, Eddie, he's doing this, we got to work on this." He's a fantastic gentleman. I know that he's been here a long time. All these teachers have dealt with Eddie, and they know how he was and is some days better than others. Mr. Altmeier deserves to be here. He loves this community. He spent almost two decades working for this community. I think he needs to stay here as the principal. That's all.
Other comments? Okay. Last call for public comments on agenda items. Okay. So we will close item 14, move on, sorry, item 9, and move on to item 10. Education discussion items. We did not meet as a committee, I'm sorry, education committee. Since there were no committee meetings prior to this, we'll move on to item number 11, education action items. So looking for a motion to move item 11A through G as a block.
Motion to move A through G as a block.
Actually, wait a minute, sorry, sorry, let me say that again. A through E is a block, sorry, not G. A through E is a block, my apologies.
Motion to move A through E as a block.
Second.
Okay. Open for questions, comments? I did have a question. So with, on the CBI site list, so I noticed Uncle Louie G.'s Italian Ices and Ice Cream. They're under new management, so I guess that was taken into account, I would have to assume, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that this is a pre-approval for the '25-'26 school year.
Okay.
So assuming that a relationship can be built with any organization if there is new leadership, then our MD teachers, who are amazing, will just work with those folks.
Okay, wonderful. Any other comments, questions? Okay, last call. Okay. Mr. Pepe, can you please call the roll?
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Condit?
Yes.
Ms. Ibeck?
Yes.
Dr. Gendrona?
Yes.
Mrs. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Sainoy?
Yes.
Ms. Shimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Shep?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item number 12, personnel discussion items. Personnel committee report, we did not meet, or Personnel Committee did not meet prior to this meeting, but will before the next. So we'll move on to item number 13, personnel action items. This time it's A through G. So looking for a motion to move items 13A through G as a block.
Motion to move 13A through G as a block.
Second.
Okay, we are open for questions or comments?
I just, whoop. Sorry. I just want to congratulate Ms. Anastasi on her upcoming retirement. She will be working at the beginning of the next school year, but we have posted a position for an elementary music teacher, so we'll be hiring a new music teacher for September and October. She'll remain on staff, helping out in some leave replacement positions. But obviously, we'll have the opportunity to honor her and her incredible contributions to the district as well. But I just want to congratulate her as, you know, for the contributions that she's made. I also do want to point out that we are hiring a new football coach. And this is after the amazing career of Dave Denapoli and his decision to step aside, which is obviously bittersweet. We know that if he felt like he could do it and put the time in and be physically up for it and mentally up for it, he would probably never stop. But, you know, all good things must come to an end. I do think that the work that he did with Mr. Lynch in finding Flip McGowan was great. And I think we have an excellent successor who will really lead the program in the same vein of character and trust and, you know, success that he led it for, for the many years that he did. So I'm excited about that as well. Thank you.
And I too would like to echo Mr. McGowan coming on as, well, hopefully very soon coming on as coach. I think that's a wonderful choice, and I look forward to him joining us in that regard. So we are open for 13A through G, questions, comments?
I too am looking forward to Flip coming on. I just, you know, when Barb was a part of this board, it was nice meeting Flip through that. And he's always been a stand-up guy, and he's a great leader on the field from what I've seen. I'd like to thank the public for their comments that were made today. That's it.
Any other questions, comments? And thank you, Mr. Anderson, for reminding me. Thank you, everyone, for the comments that you gave today as well. Okay. Last call. Okay. Mr. Pepe, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
I vote yes for 13B through G and no to A.
Everything on A or just?
A1.
Thank you. Mrs. Condit?
Yes.
Ms. Ibeck?
Yes.
Dr. Gendrona?
Yes.
Mrs. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Sainoy?
Yes.
Ms. Shimpf?
No to A1, yes to everything else.
Ms. Shep?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 14, operations. The operations committee did not meet, so there is no report, committee report to add. So at this time, moving to item number 15, operations action items. Looking for a motion to move 15A through T as in Thomas as a block?
Move 15A through T.
Second.
Open for questions or comments?
Yeah, I just want to point out a couple things on the Ops Committee agenda. The first is, I'm very excited that we'll be bringing back the dual enrollment program with Middlesex College. So thank you to Mr. Lynch for spearheading that work with the Counseling Department. It looks like in year one, probably next year, we'll be offering college algebra and pre-calculus, those two courses. And hopefully, in the hiring process, we can bring in some new folks who have the master's degree. Those courses are three, four, or five credit courses for $135 and a college transcript, so it's an incredible bargain for the students. And Middlesex College has been great, expanding their work. So that is the first item. I also want to point out item H. Item H is a new MOA that we have with the New Jersey Office of Homeland Security and Preparedness. This is a level of, this is called CrowdStrike Falcon, which is a state-of-the-art endpoint protection platform, cloud-based. It works on all platforms, so it will work for PCs, Macs, and Chromebooks, et cetera. It's used by Intel and really sort of all across industry as kind of an industry standard. And we've basically gotten this for a song. I really want to thank Dave for his incredible work, working with them and pushing them. But that's going to be deployed to our units as well, coming up shortly. And then lastly, we are renewing the contract and the prices with Matio's for next year. And these prices remain the same as last year, which actually remained the same as the year prior. So this is now two years in a row that we've been able to keep costs the same as a result of the surplus that we've been able to generate in the cafeteria fund. So excellent stuff for the kids. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ross, can you expand on what that Endpoint Protection Services does again?
Yeah, so it's like early warning for malware attacks on the system. So it's not actually on the system, it's all cloud-based. It's not on computers, individual computers, but it's protecting the network prior to even the network protections that we have.
Other questions or comments? I too did want to note about the Middlesex County, the dual enrollment. I think that's fantastic. I believe it's, what is it, pre-algebra and algebra, I believe, for the courses?
Pre-calculus and college algebra.
Oh, sorry, pre-calculus and college algebra. And they'll be able to, and those will be transferable credits that they can apply to a college degree. So I'll say for a junior to rising senior, I think that's going to be very tempting. So, okay. Any other questions, comments?
Yes.
Oh.
It's okay. Item I, the support services from White Glove, what exactly do they do with the district?
I remember we had this conversation last year, now that you mentioned it. I don't know, off the top of my head. I would have to look at the attachment more carefully.
I think it was the substitutes, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it was like substitute nurses and possible related services.
Yes.
And I don't believe we use them at all this year. Same thing is that we approve a list because in a pinch, when we need to use someone, they're on our list if we have to use them, but I don't believe we've actually used them yet.
Your feedback is noted. Yeah. Thank you for the reminder.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you for that, by the way. Thank you. Questions or, other questions or comments? Last call. Okay. Mr. Pepe, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Condit?
Yes.
Ms. Ibeck?
Yes.
Dr. Gendrona?
Yes.
Mrs. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Sainoy?
Yes.
Ms. Shimpf?
No to item I, yes to everything else.
And Mrs. Shep?
Yes.
And Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, wonderful. Moving on to item number, sorry, 16, old business. So anyone would like to bring up old business? Okay. I would just mention, make my plug, and we'll keep doing this until we get there, for New Jersey School Boards Workshop in October. So we've talked about it before, but just want to put the plug in. It is a wonderful time to learn about what's going on in other school districts and what is the state of the art with regards to school boards. So, and that is again in October, third week, I believe. So I'll leave it there, since we've covered that ground. So let's move on to 17, new business. Anyone with new business?
I have some new business.
Ms. Ibeck?
I had the opportunity to attend.
Could you, sorry, move in, just move in closer.
I had the opportunity to participate in the NJSBA Delegate Assembly on Saturday, May 10. At the meeting, there were three resolutions that were passed. The first resolution was proposed by the Woodbury Board of Education, which involved the inclusion of esports for interscholastic competition. It passed by like a multitude of measures. It was demonstrated by, the background reviewed the benefits of having esports as an opportunity for students that don't typically participate in traditional sports competitions. And they found that 90% of the participants in districts that provide those esports, 90% of the participants did not participate in traditional sports within the district. It was found to offer social, emotional functioning enhancements, a sense of contributing to the school community through esports, and the opportunity to earn varsity letters. It also was encouraged to involve inclusion for students that don't typically participate in interscholastic groups. So I found that an interesting resolution. Resolution two passed very narrowly. That was proposed by Franklin School District, and that involved an amendment to the requirements for school nurse to change to that of an RN with three additional classes for school-specific operations rather than during the course of the first 18 months of employment. So it was proposed to offset the challenges of the school nursing deficits that we're encountering through districts. But the, those that opposed the amendment or the resolution were retired school nurses that found that their position was that this would negatively impact the certification itself. And finally, the resolution number four, proposed by Kitteny Board of Education, involved a position of reasonable amount of state-approved excused absences for students pursuing careers in skilled trades in comparison to those that are seeking collegiate opportunities so that the students that would be participating in skilled trade interviews and exploring those career paths would have equitable opportunity to have excused absences. So that passed by a large margin as well. So just wanted to share that with the board.
Thank you, Ms. Ibeck.
Can I just add a little color to that?
Absolutely, please. Go ahead, Mr. Pepe.
That was great. I just want to share for the public and for anyone who's not aware of the work of the Delegate Assembly, just what its purpose is. So school boards has this group of delegates that come together. These motions that you just heard about are motions that people from around the state or around the region make to promote NJSBA advocating for these things. So what happens now with those motions that pass is NJ school boards will now go into gear of doing advocacy actions for those things.
Right. And thank you, Mr. Pepe. And just to add to that, so Ms. Ibeck is our representative, is our delegate representative?
Altered it.
You are a representative. But it kind of puts into perspective. So we sit here as a board of nine for Dunellen, and we are one of many, many boards that exist in the state of New Jersey. And there are different things that, you know, do come up, different questions. What we do is dynamic. And what you've demonstrated or what you've shared with us are, is the process working. And it's the process doing its business. As things, as the, as, our environment involves, as things change, we adapt, and resolutions like this come out. And then that's how we advocate for our kids and make what we do better. So it's not just what we do here at the board, but on, in this town, but across other boards in other towns across the state that helps to unify us. Thank you again, Ms. Ibeck. Any other questions, comments? Sorry. New business. Okay. Moving along to President's remarks. Again, I will pass, as I think I've said enough already in the initial session. Moving on to item number 19, public comments on any issue or any topic. The Board invites public comment on any issue or topic from members of our community. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, public comment sections are intended to provide an opportunity for members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The Board and administration will be taking notes during public comment but will not provide substantive responses to questions or concerns raised by individual speakers. If necessary, the superintendent may provide a brief response after the entire public comment period is completed. The Board appreciates and welcomes feedback from the community but is not at liberty to engage in a back-and-forth dialogue with members of the public during this portion of the meeting. Prior to making your public comment, please state your name and municipality. Please note that all statements must be directed to the presiding officer. Please come to the microphone at this time if you would like to make comments on any issue or any topic. Last call. Okay. Moving on to item number 20, executive session. The Dunellen Board of Education will now adjourn into executive session to discuss items that fall within specific exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act, CNJSA 104-12B. Confidential matters discussed by the Board during this executive session include items related to individual privacy, collective bargaining agreements... related to individual privacy, collective bargaining agreements, pending or anticipated litigation, as well as personnel. Any discussion that does not need to remain confidential will be made public as soon as it is practical. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. All individuals who may be discussed in executive session have been adequately notified. Action will not take place after the conclusion of the executive session. So may I have a motion, please, to move into executive session?
Move to move to executive session? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we are going to move to adjournment after the executive session, so there's no need for you to stay unless you really want to come back, and we're going to be in there for a while. Our next meeting is June 10th, same bat time, same bat channel. Hope to see you then. Thank you so much.